And as we start today, today's meeting is a little bit different for a few reasons. First of all, in the absence of the mayor, I'm Chris McConaughey, councilmember for District One, and I am acting Mayor Pro Tem, so in his absence, I'll be chair of the meeting tonight. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance by Chief McElreeh, and as he's coming to the podium, I probably should have written this down so I don't choke up, but I would hope everyone remembers that today is the 75th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. Over 2,400 people, military and civilian, lost their lives. That day was a day that changed the lives of many people, my family included. Both my grandparents ended up, both my grandfathers ended up serving in the military. My grandmothers picked up a lot of slack that was up behind our home. I hope today, as we say the pledge, will reflect back on the sacrifice that so many have made for us, so that we can appreciate the freedom of being here and able to govern ourselves in this forum, and for the privilege of this democracy and a republic in which we live. Please, please show all proper and appropriate respect as we proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief McElreeh.
If the audience would please arise, before we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, if I could ask that we take a moment of silence to remember the attacks of Pearl Harbor, and also note that there are two ships that remain underwater in Pearl Harbor. One is obviously the USS Arizona, the other is the Utah battleship named the Utah, and it's interned with 53 crew members that are still inside that ship underwater in Pearl Harbor. So we can take a few seconds for a moment of silence to remember those that gave their lives that day.
You will now please repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Tonight's meeting also differs a little bit because the city council is responsible, not just, not just the authoritative body for the city council, but there are a few other entities which the city council chairs. We have a little bit of housekeeping that needs to be done for three of these entities this evening, so we're going to go through, that housekeeping should only take us a couple minutes, and then we will return to the agenda for the city council meeting. So, that having said, do we need a motion to convene, or can I just convene the RBA? Okay, so I will convene the redevelopment agency meeting. First item of business is to approve the minutes of August 10th, 2016, and August 24th, 2016.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Jacob.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Nichols. Any comments of motion, any discussions of motion? Seeing none, let's vote. Does this need to be a roll call?
It doesn't necessarily be. It's up to you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just unanimous in favor. Business item 2B, Resolution Number 188, approving the meeting schedule for the West Jordan Redevelopment Agency for 2017. Looking for comments or a motion. Councilmember Nichols.
Move to approve Resolution 188.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nichols, second by Councilmember Jacob. Does this one need to be a roll call?
Resolution number... Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Aye.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem McConaughey, I apologize.
Chair.
Chair.
Chair. Yeah, I'm back. Board Member Hagan?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
And Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Vote pass the six in favor.
We will adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting, or redevelopment agency meeting, and convene the municipal building authority meeting. First item of business, approve the minutes of September 21st, 2016. Motion or discussion?
I move to approve minutes.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Burton, second by Board Member, by Board Member Burton, second by Board Member Nichols. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's the unanimous and the affirmative. Second item of business, approve Resolution 90, approving the 2017 meeting schedule for the West Jordan Municipal Building Authority. Discussion or a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Burton, second by Board Member Jacob. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Aye.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Hagan?
Yes.
And Chair McConaughey.
Aye.
Now the six in favor.
We will, we will adjourn the municipal building authority meeting, and convene the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District meeting. First item of business, approve the minutes of June 8th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Jacob, second by Board Member Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here's the unanimous and the affirmative. Second item of business, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution 16F-179, which is the 2017 annual meeting schedule for the West Jordan Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District.
So moved.
Second.
Move to approve?
Move to approve, thank you.
Second.
Alright, so a motion by Board Member Burton, second by Board Member Hagan. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Board Member Hagan?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Chair McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Jacob?
Aye.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Vote pass the six in favor.
We will adjourn the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District meeting, and reconvene our city council meeting. We will move to the presentation. First presentation is 2016 West Jordan Victim Assistance Statistical Update. David Bricky.
Thank you, council. I'm going to introduce you to two representatives of our office who do a tremendous amount of work and service for this community that is unknown, unherald, and not recognized. However, tonight we get a chance to share with you what it is they've just done in this last quarter. This is also a requirement of the grants that are provided that help fund our victim advocate program. The agenda that actually identifies the work in the presentation will be turned back over to the state so we can justify the work, and after you see and hear what is presented tonight, I think you'll agree it's well earned. So if I turn it over to our two victim representative, Cecilia Latt, who's been working with the city for now almost 20 years, Lon Sizer, who's been with the city now for about seven years, but is a volunteer most recently, now as part-time, will probably see her working full-time here shortly, but I'll turn it over to them. Presentation.
Our mission statement.
Mike.
I will put shelf上的 services to the community for crisis intervention and advocacy for victims of violent crimes. The advocates can assist the filing of the crime victims' compensation claim. The advocate can transport individuals to the police station, hospitals, family, resource centers, shelters, court, and any other place for their safety. Assist in obtaining police reports, assist in filing at the protect waters. An advocate will keep victims well informed of their cases, attend court proceedings with or without the victim, assist in preparing the victim or witnesses for court, to include introducing the person to the courtroom. This also includes introducing children to the courtroom. During the trial, the advocate stays with the victim or witness and explains the procedure and answers all questions. Our mission report for this quarter will be from July, August, and September. During this quarter, we have contacted 195 males, 920 females, making the total of 1,115. 1,015 are domestics, 53 assaults, 11 sex offenses, 17 child abuse, four elder abuse, and 25 stalking and harassment, two survivors of a homicide. 242 were victims with limited English proficiency. 20 were assisted with immigration issues, 50 on-scene crisis responses, 28 court support, 548 follow-up calls, 113 clients discussed in hot list meetings. We have volunteering opportunities, and if anybody is interested in volunteering, our phone number is 801-566-6511. Do you have any questions?
Doesn't look like there's any questions, but the statistics displayed are staggering. And just on behalf of council, thank you so much for what you do for those who need the help so very, very much.
You're welcome.
What? I think they've done quite a bit already, and they deserve to get out of council meeting free card.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you move to the next item, if I could ask Melanie for her help, or maybe I guess Brian.
So this next presentation is the open meeting slash public notice training for city council members. And this does have application to other public entities such as Planning Commission as well, so this is very appropriately timed. Mr. Bricky.
Thank you, and it was appropriate in light of the fact that we have a new member. Congratulations. We wanted to share with this information with you at the end of this year, and also identify it as a new member kind of refresher for some of the other members who've already probably seen this previously. Utah has a Title 52, Chapter 4, that sets forth the requirements of an open meeting policy within the city. The history of that was the legislature identified very early that procedurally, they wanted things done with an open door policy. To do that, they require notice and an opportunity to be heard at buildings that have conducted meetings, such as tonight's city council meeting, but you can also apply that to Planning Commission, and we'll get into further descriptions of what those meetings look like and who needs to schedule them and give appropriate notice. Under Title 544102, the public policy has been very clear about, and the courts have addressed, open policy is generally the request of both the courts and expectation of the legislature. The actions and deliberations of the council are to be done in an open setting with an understanding of why you're voting and how come you're voting a particular way. There are five parts to an open and public meeting process. One is establishing the meetings, two, giving appropriate public notice, three, taking appropriate minutes and records, that's Ms. Briggs' part, and then there are occasions when closed meetings are allowed. If those closed meetings are not properly noticed, there's an enforcement process that's actually set forth by the code. What is a meeting? A meeting is a conveying of the public body or a quorum of those present who will make a final decision. That can include workshop or executive sessions, they include meetings held in person, or even those, if you are having, in the case of some cities, there are some locations that allow for one individual to be present and others to participate by electronic means. Even if you have four individuals somewhere else, that would still be convened as a public meeting. So example, the most obvious one is probably our email. You have to be very careful when corresponding through email, because you're doing so even though you're not at the same location. Similar as a meeting. If the purpose of the meeting is to discuss revised comments or act upon a matter where the public body has an ability to observe, you have to do it in a public setting. What is a public body? The city council, Planning Commission, or any other individuals that are two or more and have financial support and the ability to spend money. It's a rough general estimate of what it is to be a public body. What is not a meeting? A chance encounter. If the four of you cross paths at Gardner Village, that is not a meeting. If you're down shopping at some mall and you run into each other, that's not a meeting. Even that occasion when you're at a social gathering and four of you end up in the same room, that is not a meeting. However, if the four of you are all on the same website in a forum, that might be construed as a public meeting. If you're all there discussing something, you'd be very, very careful not to espouse on policy. If the four of you are in a forum setting, that could be very problematic. The training also that we're doing today is not, although it was noticed, you can have training meetings that are not public meetings. That's probably something that you'll be scheduling in January. Public notice requirements allow annually, at the beginning of the year, those public meetings to be scheduled well in advance. That's where Ms. Briggs and her folks put the notice up, and it can be amended, of course, but there's generally an expectation that the date of the meeting, time of the meeting, place of the meeting, and generally the topics of discussion need to be listed. Additionally, the legislature now requires that public notice be put on the public website. Ms. Briggs and her folks take care of that for us. Regular council meetings must be held here at the city hall. There are exceptions that apply if we give proper notice. Those are meetings that might include visits to sites, locations, or trainings that occur off-site. All topics are reasonably expected to be given some type of specificity, so the public knows what's taking place in those meetings. No actions can be taken that are not placed on the agenda. I think recently there was a discussion about something, and I made a comment, we can't vote on it, we can discuss it, but any final action needs to be agended and then taken at that later vote. The presiding officer may allow members of the public to speak on a topic. That's generally what happens when you're first part of the meeting, but you cannot act on it. You can perhaps ask for it to be later put on an agenda, but that's why the public can be frustrated. I would ask you to try to explain to them, until it's agended, we cannot vote or take action on the matter. Open meetings require minutes and the keeping of records. The minutes shall be kept by Ms. Briggs and her department and be available. They should be timely kept and updated. I believe that there is no set time, but I think anything outside a month is going to be problematic today in today's world. So that's why you're going to see an effort to get those informations, those minutes in front of you and approved fairly quickly. Those minutes should include date, time, and place of the meeting, the members who are present, as well as those individuals speaking. So it's when you're having the public meetings and people come here to the podium, it's one of the expectations of the law that the individual identify themselves. Some people don't kind of wonder why, you can always refer them back to. The open meeting law requires us to identify those individuals who are speaking. The recordings shall be complete and unedited, and at some point available if desired by the public. They have to be labeled with date, time, and place of the meeting. The nature of what's taking place in those meetings have to be kept, so the agendas along with the minutes have to be maintained. Written minutes shall be the official record taken by the city. That's why also courts can rely upon what would typically be seen and argued as hearsay. It's set by statute and required that you be following these rules, and therefore we can introduce, without having to call each of you at a later point, if we want to explain to a judge what was the city's policy and how did they act, we can introduce the minutes. There are certain aspects of a meeting that probably don't want to have occur in a public setting. They're very limited in nature and they're set forth by the statutes. Before you go into a closed meeting, you have to have a quorum present, and you have to have two-thirds of the city council vote to go into the closed session, and they can only do so for certain reasons. They're very limited in purpose. They are for the purpose, you cannot pass ordinances, resolutions, you cannot engage in any contract approval or appoint any individual to an elected position. The meetings inside those closed sessions must also be recorded, and minutes kept of those later as well. You may close a meeting for the following purposes: to discuss character, competency, mental health of an individual. For example, tonight you're going to be interviewing people for positions on our Planning Commission. You may then, after those interviews, go into a closed session and discuss who you think are the more appropriate individuals to place on the commission. You may also discuss collective bargaining, reasonably imminent litigation, and that has to be litigation that's not threatened. It has to be absolutely something that's waiting on your doorstep, or actually filed. But the fact that someone says, "I'm going to sue you," or there's a likelihood of being, "I'm going to sue you," that's problematic. The Supreme Court looked at that on a decision that had to do with Salt Lake County going into a closed session to debate whether or not, to discuss whether or not Riverton's opposition to some action that the county was opposed to was imminent. They used the argument that it was Riverton's intentions to sue the county, but that hadn't actually taken place, nobody had gone to court yet. The courts ruled, you have to take that policy decision out into the public. Starting these sessions to discuss the purchase exchange or purchase of real property, that's for obvious reasons. You don't want to devalue something or give away a secret that the city may be having an advantage by doing so privately. Any criminal misconduct can be discussed, and now with our own Ethics Commission and policy and Act in place, you can go in and discuss those issues in a closed session. The public body may not interview a person, and that's why we had the process that was fairly lengthy, took a couple hours last session for the appointment of Councilmember Anderson. It had to be done in a public setting. You cannot go back into a closed session and interview anybody tonight. The minutes of that closed session must be maintained and kept by Ms. Briggs' office, and must be available for later review. Yes, sir?
Just to clarify, the difference between the Planning Commission and the city council was that we cannot interview somebody in closed session for an elected position, but for an appointed position.
That's correct. And it's my understanding that this council wants to be more open and above than even what's required by state law. So I applaud you on that effort. Who may enforce a cause of action if they feel like an open meeting law has been violated? The authority rests with the Attorney General's Office and the county attorney. However, there is a caveat, a carve-out, for individuals who believe an act has been committed without, in violation of the Open Meeting Act. The only thing they can recover, though, is after forcing the city to acknowledge the error, require the city to engage in whatever decision in an open setting, they can recover their court costs. It will be my recommendation, we avoid any of that, because the only people who get wealthy in that situation is the lawyers. If there are no other questions, I would like to just reiterate again, new members have a tendency to try to communicate quickly. Government can be somewhat cumbersome, trying to elicit responses through email can be challenging. So I'd try to avoid any kind of request that comes back as a form of, should we do this, and then expect response by email. That would be inviting some potential litigation. Are there any other questions?
Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. David, I'm on, and this is just hypothetical, so I'll, if we socialize, and I'm saying the city council, after city council meeting in the lobby, in the parking lot, is that, I mean, it's been kind of a cloud for the last three years for me, whether that's acceptable or not. What's your thoughts on that, Bigley?
My opinion would be that if the four of you at any one point are gathering in the lobby to discuss something, whether it's a decision that will be made later, or could potentially be put on an agenda, I would strongly discourage it. If it's just three of you, on the other hand, that's not a problem. The state statute allows for the gathering afterwards, and I can tell you in Summit County, where I came from, Park City Municipal Corporation and its entity, its people would go out on Main Street and routinely walk up and down Main Street as a group, visiting the different establishments. Have to be careful what I say. So I hope that answers your question. Any other questions?
Councilmember Nichols.
It's not a question, it's a statement. Based on what was said, it kind of implies that we congregate after each meeting, but I can assure you, on even one case, where there were three and I was the fourth coming up, I heard the discussion and I immediately walked off, because I knew the discussion pertained to the city. So we take it very seriously, and I want the public to know that, that even if, we have had intentionally a Christmas party, this is like seven years ago, with former Mayor Dave Newkey, and in that party, there were four of us present, but one of us, which was me, was newly elected, I wasn't even in office yet. So there were only three elected officials present, but even in that setting, at risk that it potentially could look like we were trying to do something, we ensured that conversation was strictly social, and as soon as anyone brought up city business, you were asked to leave the room. It's like, okay, none of that here, we're talking about vacations and things like that. So I just want the public to be at ease, that we take it very serious.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you for the opportunity. We'll probably give a much lengthier presentation at the beginning of the next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is communications. So we'll start with Chief Diamond.
Thank you. The only thing I have tonight, and this is not as the acting city manager, but as a police chief, is that we are graduating our most recent officer, Miles Smith, from the academy. He will be graduating next Thursday from the Police Academy. If any of you would like to attend and need further information, please contact me, and I can give you that information. So not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow.
Will we be having a smirnian ceremony as well?
Yes, that has not been scheduled yet, though.
Thank you. Mr. Bricky.
Nothing from the city attorney's office. Thank you.
Mr. Oka?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Clegg?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Piper?
Last week, we completed the financing for the new public works building, and I just wanted to thank everybody that assisted with that process.
Just wanted to let the council know that the Seventy South Project is currently out to bid. The bid opening will be January 10th, and we have a pre-bid meeting next Wednesday at 10:00 in the morning, if anyone wants to come in and look and see what the contractor's going to be asking us. There is one need to keep us on schedule, and we'll work that out over the next couple of weeks, and that is a preorder of a box culvert that takes about six weeks to manufacture, and so in order to stay on schedule ahead of April 1st deadline, we'll go ahead and preorder that, the city will, and we'll set that up and get that accomplished, according to the video rules. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bricky.
I have a question today.
Yeah, Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. Just for clarification, there's a lot of projects on Seventy South.
This is the Storm Grain Project.
Storm Grain Project, thank you.
And utilities to boot. Right now, engineer's estimate's 14 million.
Thank you.
Chief McElreeh.
Thank you, just two items. One is, got notification today in the fire department, we'll have three retirements at the end of December, total of about 90-plus years of experience leaving us. So we wish them well, and we'll have information coming out for an open house for all three of those individuals. Secondly, I failed to mention in the last meeting, the fire department held its annual awards banquet. Appreciate Councilmember Burton for attending, but also wanted to recognize, we gave out a few awards, but the one I want to recognize is our firefighter of the year award. This year was firefighter Julie Sterns was selected for that. This year was firefighter Julie Sterns was selected for that award. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Is he done? Okay, I have something to say. I thank you for having me back, hopefully you have forgotten me. And thank you for your patience with my two deputies, Carol and Jamie, while I was out of the office recuperating. I missed you guys, and it was really kind of strange, I did. So, but just thank you for the patience that you had with my department.
I'm sure they exercised a whole lot more patience with us than we did with, you know, good to have you back. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. We did miss you, Melanie, thanks for coming back. And your staff did a good job of what we gave them to do without your help, so yeah, good staff. Last week, I held a town hall meeting for the River Ridge subdivision, and we had a successful town hall meeting. Learned some important things and have made some adjustments for their area, and we'll be doing some improvements for them. There are just some minor things, such as no parking signs and some things like that. They have trouble getting out of their subdivision on the Thirteenth West when, in the spring, when Glover Nurseries having their fantastic sales, and all of West Orton wants to get some nursery items in the spring. So that was one of the successes we had there. And then next week, I'm holding another town hall meeting. This will be for the Noble Heights subdivision. The Noble Heights subdivision is located on Seventy-eight hundred South and Thirty-eight hundred West. That's on the south side of... South Side Seventy-Eight, thank you. There are some houses there that may be, that are being considered to be purchased, and some businesses that may go in those first few houses that's already been zoned for quite some time, that is commercial. And so they're looking to make some changes there. You may have noticed some of those houses, if you drive by, and you see the fences have been plastered by snow and ice from the snow piles in the winter months. And so we're hoping to make some changes there that will be good for the residents and for West Orton. So you're invited to meet with us Tuesday, Tuesday at seven P.M. here at City Hall. Thank you, Mayor Portem.
Councilmember Hagan.
Nothing, Mayor Portem, thank you.
Councilmember Nichols.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
I just wanted to say this, City Hall looks wonderful. Whoever is in charge of the Christmas decorations, holiday decorations, sorry. Don't step on any toes there. Christmas decorations, I wanted to say they look great, thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Anderson.
I have nothing to report, Mayor Portem.
Thank you, a very warm welcome.
I have a few items. First of all, the schedule for, a couple calendaring items to start with. Originally, we were hoping to have a meeting with our legislative officials on the morning of January eleventh. However, it turns out that that is an all-day caucus for them. So staff is looking for a new day that that will work. Everybody should have received an email from Jeremy asking for potential availability. Please be sure to respond to that, that's going to be the cleanest way to find a day that works for all of us. Number two, we need to solidify a date for the retreat. Traditionally, we've had our strategic planning session, where we've spent two full days listening to the needs of staff, setting the priorities for the year. This year, Mayor Rolf has asked that we see if we can do this in one day rather than in two. And the date that, one of the dates that's been proposed is July, July would be nice. January twenty-seventh. We had originally proposed January twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, but there were issues with some being able to make it on the twenty-sixth. Does January twenty-seventh for the entire day work for every, is anybody not able to attend on January twenty-seventh? Okay. We'll give that direction to staff to proceed with. One day for the strategic planning, which will be January twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh. Is that a no?
Well, it was, I didn't think the discussion was over yet.
Oh, with that particular item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes, I just, I questioned the feasibility of getting this done in one day, especially with all the items we added to it on a complete scale, when we were talking about utility rates. And we just pile on. I thought we were going to three days. Getting this done in one day will be a monumental, I, I just, I'm expressing skepticism. I don't know if there's any other skepticism here. I would be happy, I'd rather do two half-days personally, just so it doesn't take up a whole day. But just a, just my sense.
All right, well, I will ask this question first, then. Is the preference, how, by show of hands or illumination of these lovely little lights up here, how many would prefer to stick with two days?
Councilmember Nichols. My thought is more, I just want to make sure we get through the items. Because, I mean, through the years, we've been at three days, two days, three days, two days. We really fill up, even when it's two days, we fill them up. Sometimes we get out a little early on the second day, but we generally fill them up. And we're rushing through what we have, generally. I'm a little concerned that, but for me, I guess it's more to see what's on the agenda. If all we're talking about are utility fees, one day's good. But once we see that agenda, I think maybe we should, I'm thinking more plan on two, and if we can reduce it to one, let's do that.
So here is the, there's two more that I want to make comments. Let me go through the agenda real quick. The items, not the agenda, but the items for discussion are the secondary water system, what decision we want to make, if we want to proceed with that or no. The aquatic and recreation center, discussion about performing arts center, conversation about the South Valley Regional Airport and the way the city works with the airport authority. Police grant of five hundred thousand dollars with the, there's some commitment required by the city if we want to accept that. The water fee structure, the stormwater impact fee structure, and then the budgeting for the fee schedule for the upcoming year. So it is full, but I would point out in the past that historically, it's been primarily council sitting and listening to presentations by staff and really us giving more of an update of what's been going on there, rather than us saying this is the direction that we want to go. So it's a little bit of a departure from what we've done historically. So that's why the mayor believes we can do this in one day versus two. Instead of listening to the presentations, we'd be giving the direction. Having said that, we'll go back to comments. Councilmember Burton.
In the event, if one day is not sufficient, could we at, towards the end of that meeting, schedule another meeting for next week or two? Can carry on that way? Do we need to schedule further events?
We, can we versus should we? We can do it, we can schedule meetings however we'd like, but it does have a significant impact on staff and making sure resources are available, people can be there to present. So although we have at least a minimum twenty-four-hour notice requirement for staff to make plans and accommodations, keep in mind that we also have a holiday that's right up in that time. We also have the legislative session going on, so the sooner we can tell them, the better. If we think we might do two, it might be better to go two days and then cancel one of them.
By the list that you raised, I'd like to follow up.
Yes.
I think we could fit that out on one day. However, if the jury of the council feels otherwise, I would be available to do it Friday morning. Do a half-day on Friday, and on Thursday morning, do a half-day on Thursday, and do a full day on Friday.
Okay.
Councilmember Anderson.
And I agree, if you have a two-day meeting, you can, you can fill up the time fairly readily. I think having a one-day meeting gets us to work at the tasks at hand. However, that being said, I would concur with Councilmember Burton that it might be good to do a full day and a half day as needed, if we needed to go that. But I would probably swap it and do the full day first and a half day second.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, sir. My feelings is, we don't have enough communication between staff and council, between city manager's office and council. And this is the one time where I feel like we sit down, we have good communication back and forth. You're right, we just spend a lot of time sitting and listening to staff reports because every time we're in here, it's nothing tonight, Mayor, nothing tonight, Mayor, nothing tonight, Mayor. Or Mayor Portem, excuse me. Nothing tonight, Mayor, yes, Mayor. So, so I value that input, I value those presentations from staff, I think they're important. It's also, that list, the other thing that I was thinking is, that list is not complete. I'm sure we all have had things on our minds that we want to bring up in strategic plan. I know I've got a list about that long in my head that I apparently need to make known to somebody before we schedule things. But there's three or four, I have three or four priorities that I'd like to discuss as a council, and that's the meeting where I was planning on doing that. Now, if we don't have that time to discuss, then I think we're selling ourselves short. And we become much more of a reactive body, which I think a lot of people fear that we already are. As far as the seven of us are concerned, they fear that we are just sitting here voting aye or nay on whatever staff wants to do, not taking any initiative on what we want to do. So that being said, I would prefer to have more time. Also, as an employee and as somebody who's been to meetings before, I would rather have a meeting end up shorter than it was planned for than push longer than it was planned for. So I like getting out of church early as opposed to having to go over. I'd rather schedule a two-day meeting and only need one day. Or schedule a two-day meeting and need a day and a half, or schedule a day and a half meeting and only need one day. All of those would be great. I don't want to schedule a one-day meeting and need two days. My personal opinion, thanks.
I would encourage you, you mentioned that there are items that you'd like to see put on the agenda for that retreat. Our city manager has made a couple requests for any items, so I would encourage you to get those to him so that he can add them to the list. I will, we're not really taking action, but I would ask just...
I'm going to use your button.
Go for it.
Actually, since you're on this subject, on the December twenty-first meeting, the very last item on the agenda, Mark has requested that we have what he calls a workshop, more of a discussion, for the council to bring their items forward so that staff can start working on them in preparation of the strategic plan in January. So that will be on the agenda in two weeks, okay? So that we can set the agenda.
Thank you, Melanie. Councilmember Hagan, you had another comment.
Thanks, Mayor Portem. I just want to, you know, I'll plan the one day and I'll concur with what the council majority says, but is that the twenty-seventh of January that we are planning to solve?
We'll come back to that.
Okay, thanks, Mayor.
All right, so let's, let's back up a little bit. Is the, it appears that the preference might be to schedule for two days, and then if we need to back up, revert or cancel something at that point. Is there anybody who is in opposition to planning to use two full days for retreat? No opposition, or is that a comment? Councilmember Burton.
I am in opposition, but let me preface it. As with Councilmember Anderson said, if we schedule two days, we're going to use those two days. Our first day is the one that Ms. Briggs just mentioned. So technically, that is already two days that we have scheduled. Granted, the first day is just a partial day, and the second day is a full day. The first one is just part after concluding the city council meeting.
Councilmember Anderson.
I can support having some of the initial dialogue after, or at the end of our meeting on December twenty-first and feeding that information for the strategic plan on January twenty-seventh, that I can support.
All right, so given that we're going to have some conversations December twenty-first, and... How do I say this so it comes out making sense? It seems like there's consensus that we're okay moving forward, having some of the conversation on the twenty-first, and then the January meeting becomes just one day. Is there opposition to that? No offer? It is likely to be helpful.
Sorry, thank you. Sorry, again, I don't know that it's opposition other than, more than just discussion, but we do have the calendar on our consent calendar that I mentioned, we'll have to pull on the table. But it does have two days on it, so, before we approve it. I would, I would hold off on deciding for one day or two days until after the twenty-first, or until on the twenty-first, when we have a better idea of what's going to be on the agenda. I don't want to live it up. I think this is our one annual, I mean, gosh, guys, it's once a year, where we get together, we have this one opportunity to kind of lay it all out there for the year. Now, I know we have twenty-four other opportunities to change things, but this is kind of a, it's the goal-setting day. It's the, it's the communication, it's the, what do you want to do, what do you want to do, what do I want to do day? And I think it's really, I think it's important to get it right, and I don't, I just really don't want to cut it short. If we can do it in one day, that's great, but let's see what we're going to do before we decide how long it's going to take.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacob, you brought up a good point. This is up for, for the discussions, some of the consent items, and it has been asked to be pulled already for other items, so we can take a formal vote on how we proceed at that point. So I'll hold off on any more calendaring at this point. The other three comments I had would be much, much faster. Number one, kudos to our GIS department. Mr. Murphy, if you would relay that over to them. We got notification of the recognition that they received from ESRI for the map that they had done regarding sidewalk hazards throughout the city. It seems like our GIS group is always showing up, receiving some sort of accolades every few months. So we do have some very, very talented folks there who do a lot of good work that benefits the city in ways that many, many don't notice. So please send our thanks that way. This is another fun calendaring item. Boulder Ventures, the group responsible for the TOD, has asked to meet with the council for about an hour to provide us with a tour of what's been done at the TOD. They'd like to meet either an hour before a council meeting at some point in time, or perhaps on a Saturday. I forwarded the, I forwarded the email to the group, so you could have a little bit of chance to think about that. A, if this is something we'd like to entertain, or B, if, excuse me, and B, if so, when would we like to do that? My personal feeling is, other developers have reached out to council members one by one. I prefer to go that route rather than have us as an entire body set the precedent that we're willing to go out and meet with them on their terms at their project. We have not done that in the time that I've been here, and it makes me a little bit nervous. That said, I would open that up for comments, conversation, be willing to give any other opinions. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Mr. Hagan and I did a visit with them on occasion, oh, about two months ago, I would guess, and found it very enlightening and informative. And I do recommend each of the council members going there and doing that. The advantage of going together would be advantageous, where we could see what they're doing together. And as a TOD in our city, I think it'd be helpful for us to know what's happening in our TOD in our city, even though it may not be in our specific area, because that's something that benefits our city, citywide. And I think it'd be great to help emphasize the benefits of the TOD in West Orton. That being said, my personal preference would be on a Saturday because then we would not be rushed to get back in time for our meeting on weekday. However, if we do it on a weekday before our city council meeting, we might keep our time tighter that way, not... Either way, I'd be happy to stand.
Councilmember Hagan.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. So my thinking of this, because I, I think it's a learning experience from, in past years, I think two years in a row, we as a council and the planning commission went and did some reviews of different housing projects in different parts of our own city and other cities. And my only thinking, because Councilman Burton touched on it, I've been there, and it's a trans-oriented development. It's pretty well-planned out, and I think for me, it was a learning experience. I hope that maybe not just the council, but we get those that are involved with our planning to maybe attend with us like we did. There are, I don't know if you, Mayor Portem, were there, but that would be my suggestion so we have a consensus of what this project really is about. And I think that's probably what Boulder Venture wants, in my opinion, is, look what we're doing in your city. Thanks, Mayor Portem.
Thank you. And we have got to look at projects that have been completed, but we have not, to my knowledge, gone out to see a project that was currently under construction and still had various approvals that would likely be coming to us as a body to make a decision on. Given those comments and based on the training we had earlier today, Mr. Bricky, if we were to go and look at the development with them, I would assume that that would have to be an open meeting if all of us were there. It made comment that all council meetings had to be held at City Hall, but this would not... but this would not necessarily be a council meeting. Is it possible to have a open meeting outside of council chambers on a field trip type?
That is allowed. You would have to perhaps agree where that meeting would start. So if you're transporting in a bus and you're all five or six of you going to be there and the press wants to ride along or somebody here in the audience wants to come along, you have to make accommodations. If you're agreeing that the meeting begins at a location and you're independently getting there, three of you could travel together, but I'd recommend no more than three in one vehicle. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you. So we have two that would be in favor of meeting with them as a group. Are there any other opinions? Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. My opinion is either way, individually or as a group, I'm happy either way.
Okay. I will relay that information back to them. And then, last item I have, I've been contacted by a number of citizens with concerns about parking on streets during inclement weather. Personally, I would like to see an increase of noticing of the vehicles that are parked illegally. We're not allowing vehicles to park on the streets overnight when there's snow falling around the road. I would like, if there's no opposition, I'd like to give direction to staff to increase noticing, whether that's by ticket or by warning. But increase the noticing of those vehicles that are parked contrary to city code. Yes.
If I could just address, that's one of the aspects of the city attorney trying to look at, perhaps creating ordinances that are held rather than through criminal process, through an ALJ. We're going through a whole rewrite of the ALJ system that is looking for ultimately compliance, not penalizing someone. Telling people, don't park on the street, but if you choose to park on the street, there'll be a citation issued. You can challenge it. But it wouldn't be of a criminal nature where you're looking at a misdemeanor or even an infraction. So that's something we're putting together in the city attorney's office and will be bringing to the council for your review.
Thank you. For the benefit of those who are in attendance tonight, ALJ is switching things from a criminal process to more of an administrative process, kind of like what we did with code enforcement before, so that we can encourage compliance as opposed to penalization. We just want people to comply with the law that's there. That's all I have for my comments. We'll move on to citizen comments. I've only had one person submit to speak so far, so we will start with her, Ms. Framo.
Mayor Porton and city council members, let's pause, please. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon common goals before we begin the business of this meeting. We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faith, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. This should have been read at the very beginning. Do you know Solway County Council, they have, prior to their meeting, they go ahead and they call to order, pleasively, and then they have meditation. Anybody wants to come up and meditate? And I think we need to really strongly think about that because not just this particular meditation, but I think we have to have it at the beginning rather than, I mean, we've had so much going on already for an hour. And I think it's important to do this. But one thing, none of you mentioned on the strategic planning. You all have to say, when you're talking about the two-day or one day, one and a half, none of you mention the public. It is open to the public. I come to, I have been to the strategic planning for two solid days. I love it because I'm learning, I'm learning what the different departments are doing. And to try to shortchange it, I know our manager has tried to shortchange a lot of stuff. And here he is again, shortchanging the strategic plan. I think it's important. And as one of the congress, I mean, council members said, it's one time a year. One time a year that we're going to discuss, get involved in all the departments that are going on. So I pray you do a two-day thing. I don't, I think it's an injustice for the public, for us. I mean, that want to come, but none of you have even mentioned that the public is invited to the strategic plan, not one of you. And I think you've got to stress that. Get people involved. Tell them they are welcome. Because I'm sure a lot of people don't think that they're even welcome to come, but I know it's an open meeting. I have more to say, but anyway, the lights look great. I am proposing to put a passenger crosswalk there, but I'll have to wait and do that later. My time is up. Anyway, talk to you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to? Is there anybody else who would like to speak during citizen comments? If you're here to speak about the public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to do so later, but this is your last chance to speak about anything else on the agenda or even not on the agenda. Okay. Not seeing any other comments versus, not seeing anyone else wanting to speak versus comments, we'll move on to the consent items. I've been asked to pull consent item B, as in Bravo, and I've not had any other requests. So if there are no other requests, I'd be looking for a motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I move to approve the consent items less item B.
Motion by Councilmember Nichols, second by Councilmember Haga. Any discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Chairman McConaughey?
Aye.
Mayor Porton? Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Since it's just the one item, we'll return to consent item B right now to resolve that. And we'll start with Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, I asked to pull this on a different notice of whether it's a one-day or two-day for the strategic retreat. But, you know, we talked a little bit earlier about the meeting with the legislature on January eleventh. And my concern with that is that's just about ten days before the session, which doesn't really give us a lot of time to formulate what we need as a city in a legislative session to work with, to help us, to help our city. And so my thought would be, instead of reaching out to the council in November to plan a meeting with the legislature in January, that we back that up a couple of months. We have lobbyists that help us. We have our goals that we would like to accomplish. And I just don't see how we can do that effectively, having a meeting ten days before the session begins. And if we're calendaring the 2017 meetings, I felt that we could put a tentative date down for that. A good date might be November twenty-first when we canvass the election. Or we canvass the election on two Tuesdays after Election Day. And then post the legislature here, they would have ten months or eleven months' notice of when the meeting is. And we can plan that on our calendar and be able to have dialogues with them. And it will help the council, the city administration, and the lobbyists that work for us to be able to come up with a consistent message of the things that we would like the state of Utah to help us with.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor Porton. I agree with what Councilmember Anderson is saying. I like the idea of getting out in front of the legislature a little more, the legislative session, a little more. I would rather do it on a day that we're not already having a council meeting because adding it to a council meeting, I think, is it's too much for one day. That day, that third Tuesday that's on this calendar is not just to canvass the election. It is the council meeting for the second council meeting in November, which could be several hours long. As we ever want to do. So with that said, I would rather, I like that idea. I would like to do it. I'd just rather do it on a day that's not already scheduled for the council meeting. The week before that would be great, either on Wednesday or Tuesday night, whichever. Or as a breakfast meeting, as it's been in years past, even though it's been in January, I like the breakfast idea.
My two cents. For the benefit of those who are newer to the council, prior years, we've had a council meeting that we have kept short and kept the agenda intentionally light, so it was less than an hour. And then we adjourned the council meeting so that we could meet with the legislators at seven o'clock that night. That way, everybody was already planned to be here. We could do whatever items, whatever business was essential. And then we moved back to the dinner with the legislators and proceeded from there. So we have been able to do that historically in the past. Councilmember Burton?
It's me.
Oh, Melanie.
Sorry. Just a little side note. The last paragraph, it says, "Meetings in addition to those specified herein will be held as circumstances require. Appropriate notice will be given for such meetings." So technically, meetings such as the legislative dinner or breakfast, I've never included it on the annual meeting schedule because it can fall at any time. So we can add it. But I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, that we can have additional meetings or even these that are scheduled, we can cancel these meetings.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, I guess that's really the props of what I'm saying is, is I think as we're planning this into this next year, whether we actually schedule it on a council meeting or not, I think holding it earlier is better than trying to hold it in January.
So with that said, is there any opposition to directing staff to include the legislative dinner on the agenda for the twenty-first?
Because I can add it and then, of course, it can change if needed.
For November twenty-first? November twenty-first.
I would like it to be on a different meeting if possible. I would likely not be in attendance on the twenty-first of November. There are very few things I know eleven months in advance, but my daughter's birthday is one of them.
November eighth is actually the day after the election.
That's my wife's birthday. We picked a winter in November next year. It was just a.
Alright, so is there anybody else in opposition? Because it sounds like there are five in favor. There are five not in opposition, which would imply in favor of the twenty-first. Okay, we'll proceed with that. And then knowing that we can make changes as necessary. Going back to the strategic planning for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, it sounded like the majority wanted to retain those two days, January twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. I know there's one in opposition for both days. Is there somebody else who's supportive of doing a planning for a half-day on the twenty-sixth and a full day on the twenty-seventh? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I would be open to a half-day on the first and a full day on the second.
That's exactly the way these are. Half-day on Thursday, full-day Friday. Okay, so you're supportive of that?
Your question was, is there others that would be open to that? And I would be open to that.
Okay, so two that are in favor, does that imply that the others are opposed? My thought would be if we're gonna do four days, or excuse me, two days, do the full day first day and early on the second day. Councilmember Haga, or sorry, sorry, Councilmember Jacob, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Burton.
I was just seeing that the consent item, as it's listed, says that we can add or cancel meetings. I was just ready to make a motion and proceed with the rest of our meeting.
Councilmember Burton?
The problem I have the Thursday afternoon, the reason I'm saying Thursday morning, just so you know. The council has been invited to OSI to tour their facilities at noon, and then there's a Wasatch Front Regional Council meeting in the afternoon on that Thursday.
That's a good day. That's a good day.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution sixteen dash one eighty.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Porton McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
The vote passes six in favor.
We will proceed to our first public hearing. This is continued from our last meeting. Receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance sixteen dash fifty-one, which is approving a rezone of three point one acres from R one ten A P D, single-family residential, ten thousand foot square lots, planned development, to R one eight C, single-family residential, eight thousand square foot lots for West Woods Rezone located at approximately seventy-nine hundred south, twenty-seven hundred west. David Oka?
Thank you, Mayor Porton. Yes, as you may recall, this is a rezone that's right over there by the high school. And Adam Nash, the applicant, is here to address the council this time.
Counsel, I'm Adam Nash, forty-three, seventy-six, south, seven hundred east in Murray. I'm the applicant and also the owner of the property. In working with Nannette Larson and the staff, as well as with the people in the board here or in the council, we would like to change that petition and have it go to the E classification of the zone so that we are consistent with the desires of the city in the housing types. Just a quick note or two. So the property immediately to our west, it really is significantly smaller lots, smaller homes. And I didn't know, if you guys realize it, but it's also duplexes. And they're not necessarily of the maintained to the quality that we are offering to the city. So I wanted to know that we know that we are offering a superior product than what the balance of that project was going to be when it was zoned with that prior zoning. So we feel that that zone will allow us to provide a very nice subdivision. I quit counting subdivisions in projects at two hundred, but this is this is going to be like a little top ten project for me as far as its overall scope, its quality, and the position here in the valley. So I mean, we're very proud of this and we want to make it a very, very nice project.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Nash or for staff? Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor Porton. Mr. Nash, thank you for making those adjustments. We appreciate that. And you're right, those are duplexes that would be immediately to the west and they are also two-story. So in the event that you're putting some two-story ones there, I think that would be very good. And I think that will help the appearance as you first pull in that subdivision because you'll have your fine homes there. It will make them feel much better and make the city look much better because that's what we'll see right off the twenty-seventh. So we appreciate you making those adjustments.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. Just a quick question. It doesn't relate directly to the rezone, in fact, really not at all, but it's more just curiosity. Will this, will the homes here be incorporated in the HOA around it with the park across the street?
Not now. We did have discussed that with the HOA and they're open to it or not. They didn't know what the advantage or disadvantage would be to them. So we're open to it.
Thank you. I was just curious.
Good question.
Any other questions for Mr. Nash or for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I will open the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to comment on this item, now would be your time. You will have three minutes if so desired. Not seeing anybody wishing to make comment, I will close the public hearing and return to the council for discussion and the potential motion. Councilmember Burton?
Since there's no discussion, I would like to go ahead and make the motion based on the analysis finding contained in the staff reports and the recommendations. I have seventy-nine thirty south, twenty-seven hundred west from R one ten A P D, single-family residential, ten thousand square foot lots to an R one eight E, single-family residential with E-size lots.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Burton, second by Councilmember Haga. Any discussion to the motion? We have a motion by Councilmember Burton, second by Councilmember Hagan. Any discussion to motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Mayor Protim McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Next public hearing is, uh, Public Hearing Seven B. Receive input and, uh, input and consider for approval, Resolution sixteen dash one ninety-one, amending the salary schedule for city employees for the fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Uh, this was listed as our city manager. Does this all to?
Yes, uh, John Gardner is here to take that.
Head of the charge, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor Protim and counsel. Um, you have the information in front of you. Um, occasionally, there are housekeeping items that need to be taken care of with personnel. Additionally, we are looking at adding two new positions. Uh, for quite some time, there's been a need to add these positions to eliminate the bottleneck that, uh, occurs occasionally with, uh, development and development reviews. Um, we've tried to get by with the staff that we have, and it just has not been adequate, uh, to address the needs of the city, which is why the additional two positions have been added to the salary schedule at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor Protim. You know, I've, I've asked this before, last time we passed this, but the deputy city manager position, um. Uh, and again, the city manager's not here. I don't know, um, John, if your, was her status, are we gonna keep that position open, or?
That position is not currently funded. So, there are occasionally positions on the salary schedule that are approved positions, but that does not mean that they're being, uh, funded or staffed at this time. That's certainly the case with that, uh, deputy city manager position.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Last month, the council approved in putting in some holiday pay for some particular employees. Is that included in this?
That has nothing to do with this. That will actually, uh, come up next council meeting on the twenty-first with the, um, employee handbook, which will be brought before the council.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, my question, one of the positions listed, uh, falls into that category that you described earlier, that is a position authorized but not yet funded in the city attorney's office. My understanding, and I just want to make sure that this is on the record and on the file of the council, my understanding is, uh, next week, you said there's a budget adjustment that's anticipated to come back that will include funding for that city attorney position?
Correct. It would include the funding for these two new positions, the, uh, combination inspector and the engineering assistant, as well as for that, uh, de, uh, deputy city attorney position. That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you. And knowing the, the constraints that our staff are up against, uh, should this be approved, I would encourage staff to move with all haste to get those positions filled.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or perhaps a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. No other questions? Oh, Councilmember Burton.
In light of that additional staff, do we need to wait until after our next meeting before we can put applications out, start, start receiving applications for those positions?
If the position is approved by council tonight, we can move forward with that. Um, we wouldn't be filling it still until after the funding is approved on the twenty-first.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all open the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak on this item is welcome to do so. You'll have three minutes, and we'll start with Ms. Ephraim.
Mayor Protim and counsel, Alexandra Ephraim, thirty-seven, thirty-five, Judd Circle. Uh, I'm a little bit compute, confused about saying, again, I love clarity. I love openness. But it says amending the salary schedule, and it doesn't say amending it up or amending it down. So, now with these two positions you're talking about, is that going to affect our budget? Is it going to say we need to raise our taxes? I'm a little bit confused, because to me, this is not. Open enough. It's not giving me, as a citizen, enough information. I, you're shortchanging me, and I don't know how many others, but to me, it's not, it's not clear. So, yes, we're gonna have, apparently we are. We have always had a deputy mayor, I mean, a, a deputy manager, and then the other position, I don't know if that's brand-new or not, but how is it gonna affect the budget? It, nobody's saying that, or saying anything about that. So, it would be nice if somebody could, I don't know if you have time or not, or care to answer it, but at some time, I would like somebody to say something about it. Or agree, I'd like to know whether or not you agree with me that, that there isn't enough information on this. When you say amending the salary schedule, anybody knows you amend something. Is it up, up or down? So, thank you.
I'll take a quick moment. Typically, we, we wouldn't respond, but I'll take a quick moment to answer those questions. Uh, this is amending the agenda to increase for those positions, and I will point out that on the city website, there's a table that shows you the, the different positions within the city, and the head count currently authorized, and then what the head count authorization would be if this was approved. So, you would see the before and the after. And then it also has a scale showing the range for the salary. And so, your other question, yes, this will impact the budget, uh, and this would be followed, if successful, by a budget amendment that would be brought forth at our next council meeting, uh, to fund those positions that would have been approved. So, yes, it will impact the budget and it would require additional funding. No, it would not require any change to taxes. It would be done with money that is already within the city. I believe that is all the questions that were asked. Are there any other questions or, uh, comments that folks in the public would like to make? Seeing none, uh, I'll close the public hearing. One last item I forgot to mention is for those who did not see the information online and want to see the table, we do have an agenda over here that includes all of the information that's in our packet, so you do have that information available to you, sitting right on the corner of that, uh, that table right over there, too. I'll turn it back over to the council for discussion or a potential motion. Looks like Councilmember Hagan. We'll start with you.
Yeah, I have, I'm not in, opposed to, um, amending this. However, I, I would like to see, um, deputy city manager either be, um, taken off, because it's a, a pay range ninety-one, and if we don't have an opportunity to fill it, or if we're gonna fill it, it should be taken off, in my opinion. But that's just a comment. I'm not opposed to the passing this tonight. I just want to, I'd like to see either we hire somebody there or we eliminate that position. Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution number sixteen dash one ninety-one.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nichols, second by Councilmember Jacob. Any discussion for the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McConaughey.
Aye.
Vote passes six in favor.
Okay, moving on to our business items. Yeah, we'll start with this one. Uh, Resolution sixteen dash one ninety-two, accepting the audit report and presentation of the consolidated annual financial reports, or a CAFR, uh, for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, Bill Piper. The reason I stopped for a second was I was contemplating whether or not I wanted to ask for a motion to postpone this to our next meeting, because I know there are a number of folks who are here for the planning commission interviews that we were hoping to start about twenty minutes ago. But I trust that this will be rather quick and concise, so I'm happy to just proceed as, with the agenda as outlined. Uh, Mr. Piper.
Yeah, we'll make it quick. Uh, tonight, we have Marcus Arbuckle. He's a partner with Kettington and Christensen, our CPA firm that performed the audit, to, uh, make a presentation regarding it.
Like to thank the council for the chance we've had to audit West Jordan City, and let you know, if you ever have questions, uh, in the future, as you go through these reports, I mean, feel free to give me a call or email me, and we, we can talk about that. Um, but I'm just required to report several items to governance about the audit. I'll, I'll make it quick. But as the city council, um, we consider you to be governance over the city, and part of your responsibilities are the oversight of the financial reporting process, where management is responsible for the financial statements and the day-to-day accounting. As auditors, we're responsible to plan and perform an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, um, to obtain a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And so, an audit does not relieve governance or management of their responsibilities. And with, in doing, performing the audit, we have issued an opinion, which is an, an unqualified opinion, which is a, a clean opinion. So, we feel these financial statements represent what, what happened during the year and the balances at, at the end of the year. Another important part of an audit is the review of the internal controls. We feel that the internal controls that are directly related to, um, the financial, um, the financial statements are the cash receding, the cash disbursements, the payroll process, and the financial close and reporting process. And over the past few years, we have issued a, a finding related to the financial close and reporting process. And this year, I'm happy to report that that finding has been eliminated. We feel that the city has improved significantly in that area, that Bill has done a, a great job to i- improve that area, I mean, more than I'd ever imagined. It, it was, it was significant. And so, we've eliminated that finding. Um, we do have one recommendation in the internal control area, and that's to, um, in regards to bond draws, that when the city takes out a bond, they are to, I mean, the money goes into a trust account, and as that money is spent, they can request that draw to be taken out of the trust account into the city's main checking account. And so, we just recommend that that be done on a more timely basis, and finance is on top of that, and they, um, ha- have a plan to, to do that. Uh, the other, uh, area that we go through is the expenditures of federal awards for the major programs. And this year, the major program was the Community Development Block Grant. Um, we, we've reviewed that for compliance issues, and, um, last year, there were a couple of recommendations, and I'm also happy to report that we, those were, those issues were resolved, and we have no, um, further, um, recommendations related to that, that grant. So, so that's great. The, the next area that we go through is state compliance. Um, we review several areas of state compliance, including budgetary compliance, fund balance, URS compliance, um, state, their Open and Public Meetings Act, treasurer's bond and impact fees. And, I mean, we do have one, um, recommendation, one finding, which is there were two funds that were over budget. That was the RDA fund and the M, MBA fund, and so, we just recommend that in May, um, of each year, try to project any overages and then do a budget amendment in June. Also, uh, we, we take, um, fraud procedures very seriously. We inquire of employees. During the audit, we have meetings. We, um, scan through journal entries and the financials, looking for any indications of fraud, and I'm happy to report we did not find any indications of fraud. We, um, had no significant di- difficulties performing the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements. Overall, I mean, we, we feel that, um, the city's doing a, a great job. Were there any questions related to these reports we've issued? Anything that we've talked about, any, uh, with the findings?
Question from Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor Protim. Just a typo, I think, on your summary. Um, it says, "Report as findings twenty sixteen dash one." Is that correct? Should that be a year on page seven? But it, it, my, my main comment and question I have, though, is during the summer, when we awarded the CDBG grant, one of our residents asked if, how this money is allocated, where the money comes from, and then, you know, is it accounted for? And one of the comments from the mayor was that we have, uh, an independent auditor, and if, and if you can reemphasize that, that this actually audits the money that the federal government gives us, that we donate to some of our groups that our committee recognizes a need. Can you kind of expand on that, just for our residents?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the audit's called a single audit, and it is very in-depth, that it, you get the audit guide through a federal website, and, I mean, there's ten or so different areas of compliance, just on the CDBG that you have to go through and pull a sample, where we're testing the majority of these expenditures, um, and in, in detail, I mean, there's, it's, it's very in-depth, these, these single audits. And so, yes, on the CDBG, we've gone through in-depth, and we feel that the city's doing a, a great job. That CDBG, it's also audited by other, other entities. Um, I think the last one was about a year and a half ago, that the city was audited, um, through, oh, I, I don't remember which entity, but they, they get audits from other entities as well. It's not just us. And so, those, those funds are reviewed carefully, um, by several entities, so feel that they are in compliance, and that money's being spent properly.
So, just, so, our residents know, this is money that we receive from the federal government, right, that we're auditing? So, that was a question that we were giving, you know, taxpayer money. It, it is still, I guess taxpayers' money, but we receive from the federal government, and it's been fully audited, and you feel confident that we've done our, um, due diligence.
Correct. Yes. Any other, Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Have you audited us before, or is this your first time?
No, no, I.
How many years have you done this?
Seventh year, maybe?
Seven years?
Seven years.
Thank you.
Yep. So, I'd just like to thank Bill and the whole finance department for all the work that goes in, into preparing for an audit and all through the process. I mean, it's a, it's a big job, but they played a, a big part, and, um, just like to thank them for all the hard work they did. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Are you turned to the council for discussion or for a motion? Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Uh, just one, not necessarily a typo, but a, a correction that needs to be made on page six, and this is a minor thing. Um, page six has the org chart, and it's dated June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. And it lists Councilmember Anderson, who, as much as I admire him, was not here on January thirtieth of twenty sixteen. Uh, that should probably say Councilmember Sophie Rice, uh, under District Four on page six. So, that would be my, uh, my one edit, and if there's no other conversation, I move to approve the CAFR with that one change.
Second.
I do have one question. Um, does, is there any legal implication to the names that are listed there? And so, does it need to be the names of the council who approved it, or the names of the council who were in office as of the last date the reporting occurred?
I, I would say as of June thirtieth is what.
Okay.
The next page does say, as of December second, uh, the date of the report, and it lists the council members.
That's all. Thank you. Councilmember Hagan.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor Protim. Um, on page seven, number two, if we can amend the motion to correct that typo, did you see that? On your report? On your summary, page seven.
Page seven. And which note, page seven, this is on the summary of auditors' results. Page seven, which number?
Uh, number two, it says, on our copy, the deficiency report as findings two sixteen dash one. I'm, if, I'm thinking it should say, is that? It doesn't, uh.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Maybe you corrected it, not on our copy.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's okay. The two sixteen dash one, it's on page, actually, the next page on page eight, so you'll get the two sixteen dash one. So, you'll get the 216-1 on page eight. And that's what it's referring to.
And can I make a friendly amendment, too, to define the acronym CAPR as comprehensive? Would you define that?
Consolidated Annual Financial Report.
That would be my only comment to include that.
Yeah, it's not the consolidate, it's a comprehensive.
So, we have a new council member, this is first meeting, and so, CAPR. Remember, it took me a month to figure out that acronym, so, thank you.
Yeah, any else? All right. So, return, I believe the motion by Councilmember Nichols, and, or by Councilmember Jacob, and the second. By Councilmember Nichols.
Yes, and for clarification, CAPR does stand for Consolidated Annual Financial Report.
Any other comments? So, we have the motion, we have the second. Mr. Becker.
Do, do we want to switch the, the organization chart? We're on the next page, we identified as December 2nd. It's, it's Councilmember Helen Anderson.
There, there are two different dates on those two different pages. One is June 30th, and one is December 2nd. So, since we have two different councils, I would imagine we have two different names because of the two different dates.
May I suggest if we put an asterisk next to that seat, and then a lower portion indicate the exact date of the change, we will acknowledge that on June 30th, we had one council member, and then followed by the appointment of the new council member on that specific date. Would that help clarify?
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. I would amend my motion to approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 2016.
Did you amend or approve?
Amend. What, no, excuse me.
Sorry.
I'll just make a substitute motion. Scrap that last one. Amend my motion to approve Resolution 16-192 with the edit on page, I lost my report, six, right? Page six and page seven, to have an asterisk next to District Four's council member and an explanation entered.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Jacob, second by Councilmember Nichols. Any discussion, or grammar, or spelling, or punctuation changes to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Go pass the sticks and paper.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Business Item 8B, which is review the 70th South from 13th West to Bangater Highway Feasibilities Study. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and the council. This item was a study that was conducted by Hales Engineering with federal funds and local city funds, about $200,000 worth, 93% funded by the federal side, and 7% by our side. I have Greg Davenport here from our Capital Projects Section in Public Works to go ahead and go through the synopsis of the report, and turn some time over to him.
I'll try and go through this quickly. I know that you have other applicants here that you want to talk to. This was a report, again, done by Hales Engineering, and started in 2015, and they completed it in 2016. It was their job to analyze traffic conditions from 70th South, along 70th South from 1300 West to Plaza Center Drive. The study that we're talking about in this presentation reflects that information that was put in the report. We've had requests from the property owners along 70th to provide that report to them, or post it on our website. And we thought that we ought to go over that report with you first, so that if they ask you questions, you could ask us questions first, to know the answers. It's important to note that in this report, there were no conclusions that we reached in this study. Only a complete environmental assessment should come to, should come and have any recommendations that we would make to this government body. So, our presentation here is only informational. We expect that we're going to take this information and make it part of a more complete environmental assessment at a later date. Want to go to the next? The study found that there were some deficiencies along 70th South. As anyone who's driven that quarter will know, it reported that there was excessive congestion at the intersection of 70th South and Redwood Road. The congestion is, for eastbound traffic in the morning is greatest, and in the evening, it's for westbound traffic. Congestion was also reported at the intersection of 70th South and 1300 West. It was part, this was partly caused by the congestion at Redwood Road backing up into the intersection of 1300 West. The study also noted there were some safety concerns due to the narrow shoulders that limit garbage pickup, street parking, and bicycle traffic. It also noted that there were some alignment problems at 1300 West and 70th South. It also expressed concern about the safety of the sidewalks and the kids who have to walk to school. It also talked about the dangers of schoolchildren crossing four or five lanes of traffic, particularly at Heartland Elementary School. The study predicts that if no actions are taken by UDOT or the City of West Jordan, the congestion will just continue to increase, and the safety levels will get worse at every intersection. It also predicted that the bottleneck at 70th and Redwood Road would expand the hours of peak traffic. So, instead of just going for an hour or two, it would last for two or three hours. It also predicted that roadway connections at driveways that were near Redwood Road, whether those be city streets or commercial driveways, would turn into right-in, right-out-only intersections, because there wouldn't be any gaps in those queues in the traffic. There were some proposed solutions that they looked at, and again, they didn't recommend any solution over the other. They just studied these solutions. The first study, the solution that they studied was to do five lanes of traffic in the existing footprint of 70th South. So, they weren't actually moving any curb and gutter. They were just restriping 70th South. And when they did this, they did find that they, find that they decreased the amount of travel time that it took to get from 13th up to Bangeter. But they noted that there were additional safe, safety concerns in that garbage pickup, bicycle traffic, snow storage, those items would be eliminated. Instead of just having narrow shoulders, there would not be any shoulders. They also predicted that the lanes would have to be narrowed, and that might increase some traffic accidents that would happen from people changing lanes. The next one that they looked at, they actually looked at two alternatives with this. They looked at a five-road cross-section from Redwood to Bangeter. And in this road cross-section, they actually widened the road, which meant taking properties. They analyzed the properties, they analyzed this with taking properties just to the north, or then they reanalyzed it, just taking properties to the south, and looked at the impacts and at the costs. They did find that this alternative provided bike path, a bike shoulder. It also provided for on-street parking. It allowed for a greater separation between the sidewalk and the curb, and it also allowed for snow storage. The downside was, it costs a lot of money, and we'll show that at the end. Want to go to the next one? The, they also considered a seven-lane road cross-section, and this one was considered from 1300 West all the way up to Bangeter. And this road cross-section, again, solved the problems with congestion, made the congestion a whole lot less, and improved travel time. It also provided bike lanes, and it provided areas for garbage pickup, and mail delivery, and snow storage. It was the most costly option, as it's con, as it's con. It also took more properties, and it got close to some major structures that, that was a concern. The last option that the study considered was a hybrid of these options. So, it considered a seven-lane road cross-section from 1300 West to Redwood Road, and a five-lane cross-section from Redwood Road up to Bangeter. That allowed us to not take as many homes if that, in that alternative, and it also provided still some of the better traffic flow. And if you, go to the next one. Here, there's a chart that shows some of those. I want to point out just a couple portions on here. If you notice, if we do nothing, it doesn't get better. If we striped in the existing right-of-way, there's still some cost, because that road's in really poor shape, and it needs to be rebuilt. There, it shows the right-of-way costs and time saved. If you noticed, with expanding to five lanes, we only, you only save about five minutes in travel time. But if you notice, when you went to the seven-lane, or even the hybrid, so, just the seven lanes from 13th to Redwood, you could save about anywhere from 14 to 18 minutes. Those are significant savings in time, if you drive that corridor every day. Anyway, that was the results of the study. Do any of you have any questions about that study that I could answer for you?
Questions from the council? Councilmember Jacob?
I just want a quick question. How many lanes are there east of 1300 West?
There are five lanes, or, there are five lanes with shoulders east of 13th. There's still five lanes, but there's not a shoulder from 13th to Redwood Road. You don't have, there's not a lot of snow storage. The lanes are a little bit smaller, and the lane alignment doesn't quite match up at 13th. But there are still five lanes until Redwood. When you get to just pass some of the commercial driveways, where they used to be Albertson's, where there's the other commercial areas there, it changes from five down to four. There's one eastbound, there's a center-turn lane, and there are two westbound.
Right.
Right now.
Right. And then, so, as the dovetail of that, how effective will this be, or is there something to be considered here, working with Midvale, between the freeway or between, between the freeway or 700 West to 1300 West? I know Midvale's got that all under study and doing all kinds of stuff. UDOT's working on some pieces of that as well. Just so we can make it cohesive. I mean, it'd be silly for us to widen the lanes when it's bottleneck to get to the lane, right? I mean, we solve our problem, but we don't solve the problem.
You're right, as that area of Midvale grows, they are seeing more and more traffic, and that's coming through West Jordan, too. We should coordinate with them. If you notice, some of the biggest improvements you see happen between 13th and Redwood, some of the greatest travel time improvements happen on the UDOT section. And so, we certainly will be working with UDOT, especially if this project doesn't happen as one project, but might happen in phases, whatever is determined when an environmental study is completed.
Thanks.
Councilmember Burton?
Would you please review with me again the five-lanes existing role?
In this, in this current, there are different options are, in no action, right? We have right now, west of Redwood Road, after the merge, we have a very small, small shoulder, two lanes in the westbound, a middle-turn lane, one eastbound lane, which is rapidly being filled up with cars, and then a small shoulder next to that, and then the curb. In one of the options, they take out the two small shoulders and replace it with a new eastbound lane. So, the new option would be a foot or two before you hit curb and gutter, a travel lane, two westbound travel lanes, a center-turn lane, two eastbound travel lanes, and then a small separation between the travel lane and the curb. That's what, that's what that first proposal was. The next proposal with the five lanes would require us to buy property, acquire property, and that property would be most likely with homes attached. That's why it's so expensive. And that would allow us to widen. That's the only way that you can actually widen. The study did say one thing that I didn't mention. If the city was to purchase those properties, if the environmental study said that was the best option, there are chances for redevelopment, there are chances to recapture some of the money that we have spent, as people are able to take some of the large properties, combine them together, rezone them, and make them something different.
So, on the first one, the five op, the five-lanes existing role?
That's correct.
That is basically restriping.
That is basically restriping, yep.
And the total cost on that?
It's 18 million. There is a little bit of improvements we need to make at the intersections. We need to, some of the right-turn lanes aren't really a proper width, and so, there is still some property to buy. But the road from, on 70th, from Redwood up to Bangeter, it's one of the first roads that were ever built in West Jordan. It's, it's past due, and doing something to that road, and we've been holding off doing things for that road, because we know that more needs to be done. So, when maintenance opportunities come, instead of fixing the real problem of the road and making it a road section that can support all of the traffic, we've just been milling it and overlaying it, or doing chip seals, which just covers the problems. It doesn't really fix any of the problems.
So, that 19 million-
That's why the cost is the 18 million. It's to reconstruct the road from, from actually 13th all the way up to, or our section, Redwood, up to Bangeter.
Okay. So, all the options is reconstructing the road, it's just how wide and which way we move it?
And if we're going to need right-of-way or not.
Okay.
So, every option has that 19 million built into it, right? The others, that if you go through the body of the report, it actually shows which properties we would need, and an evaluation of how much that would cost us.
So, in my opinion, no act, no action is really not an option, because that just makes a bigger problem. So, if we take any action, we're spending 19 million dollars regardless of which action we choose right off the bat.
At some point, we're going to have to put money into that, that road. Yes, that's correct.
Because the no action's going to come back, and we'll do the 19 million regardless.
Every time, right. Every time we do a study, we have to look at no action. But you're right, there still is a cost to the no action, because we have to fix that section of 70th.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor Protem. So, just for my clarification, when we do the five-lanes existing right-of-way, which is ROW, that's just using the existing right-of-way. The five lanes right-of-way north would be acquiring the property on the north side. The south side would stay where it is. And the five lanes right-of-way south would be leaving the north side where it is and expanding on the south side, right?
You're reading that correctly, yes.
And then, the seven lanes are from 13th West to Bangeter. And the hybrid is seven lanes from 13th to Redwood, and then five lanes from Redwood to Bangeter.
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
I would encourage the council to drive this road, preferably during rush hour. That's right smack through my district, and deal with that every day. When I say drive through, I mean on a bicycle, because on a car, it's going to be, well, you can see, F is a grade four, some, some of these. You'll also notice as you're driving, speaking about the alignment, you'll have a parking trip on one side of the street or the other at points, not necessarily on both. There's, there's a lot of work that needs to happen here. And as was mentioned by Mr. Davenport, this is one of the problems that we have from past development, where we have homes that are facing a major arterial road, and we don't have that in Midvale. So, if you're leaving Midvale, you don't really hit the problems until you hit 13th, where, actually, even before 13th. And it's primarily backup from the intersections of the traffic, because you have all those homes and all those neighborhoods from development mistakes that were made a number of generations back. So, thank you very much for the study. And this is-
One quick question. Councilmember Jacob?
Just one quick question, thank you. When will the council need to decide on one of these?
Our plan as a Capital Projects group is to take this to Wasatch Front and ask for money to get an environmental done. Once an environmental study begins, those usually cost between one and two million dollars. Two, David is showing me over there. Once that money's done, it usually takes a year to do an environmental impact study. They'll go into these options in a lot more detail. They'll look at the ages of the home, they'll look at noise levels, they'll look at a lot of different factors that wasn't, that weren't looked at here. When that study is done, then we'll bring back all the alternatives with all their impacts. Then it's time for you to be able to make a recommendation. But until that environmental study done, they ask no one to form any opinions of what is the best option.
But until that environmental study done, they ask no one to form any opinions of what is the best option. They would like the study to be completed, and then people, especially people on the government board, then make decisions when they have all the facts.
So, so these costs, as listed here, ballparked and may change based on that environmental study?
Yes, and there are also planning level, uh, costs, so, um, you know, that's costs that we can take to the legislature, or have UDOT take to the legislature and say, hey, you know, your section is between Redwood Road and Thirteenth. You need to go ask for some money, because this needs to be widened.
Thank you.
Or not widened, depending on what the assessment of the environmental impact is.
And then I have one last question, I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Davenport or Mr. Murphy, but, um, I believe it was last year when improvements to Seventy South were moved, was it from the twenty-year plan to the five-year plan?
That's correct. Um, let me chime in here, Greg. Um, right now, uh, this, uh, section of Seventy South is on phase one of Wasatch Front's plan. So that's within the next five to ten years, and, and includes from the present forward. So the next steps Greg has shown you is that we take this now, and we go back for the environmental impact statement money. And the timeframe on that is going to take one to three years, quite honestly. Seventy-Eight South, having done this a couple of times, uh, and so forth, this project is just like Seventy-Eight South was, uh, a decade ago, when we went through that with the city. And it took three years to get that environmental record of decision done. What you're looking for now is a future environmental impact statement and a record of decision, so that you can pull in federal highway funds to get this job completed.
And then I think it took about ten years to actually complete the work, once the environmental impact statement was complete.
Thank you. The, the one last comment I'll add for staff is that, um, when we were working with Fifty-Six Hundred West, looking for funds from that, we were able to, um, push those legislators and other folks representing the city to help get federal funds. So very much appreciate the effort that's been started. And I'm hoping for city management, um, to continue to push with our, uh, well, those who are representing us at the legislature, both elected, and those who, um, lobby on our behalf to try and make this a priority to get funds, because that's roughly half of our annual budget right there.
We could not have done the project you were talking about, Fifty-Six West, without the help of those funds from the legislature.
Thank you very much for, for the work.
There's no further questions. Uh, that concludes the, the body of the agenda. Um, I'll ask if there are any remarks for closing before we discuss where we proceed from here. Any remarks? Okay. Uh, councilmember Nichols, did you have something?
I'm just debating whether this is appropriate time. Uh, when we go to the planning commission, it's just a thought. I know it was sent out as a fifteen-minute interview for each candidate. I wanted to propose the idea of ten minutes per candidate. Historically, it's been ten, and that would reduce it from a three-hour process to two, and I would just like to recommend that.
Absolutely. All right, so, on that note, I'll move forward and explain where things will go from here. We're going to, uh, not adjourn the city council meeting, but we're going to move from open session into closed session to discuss one item of business that needs to be addressed by the council tonight. After that, we will recess the closed session, and then we will, uh, proceed with interviews for those applicants for the planning commission. We're going to perform those interviews in two groups, so you'll have three councilmembers on each side. Room on this side, we'll have representatives from District One, District Three, and one at-large councilmember, which will be councilmember Haga. In room three thirty-one on this side, we'll have representatives from District Two, District Four, and one at-large, which will be councilmember Nichols. Um, the idea is so that, uh, we want to avoid dividing the city into an east-west viewpoint as we're talking through some of this conversation. So that's why we're going to be dividing north-south, and then with one at-large councilmember in each. Um, as councilmember Nichols mentioned, we will go through and spend about ten minutes per applicant. And we're going to let, uh, you decide among yourselves the order in which you'd like to be interviewed. Uh, we've gone through before and tried putting a schedule together, but I know some have family commitments and young children, and, uh, it's already getting rather late. So I would ask that you split yourselves up, somebody evenly. If you're waiting to be seen on this side, sit on this half the room. Somebody will come, and you'll come in when you hide your interview, you'll come back and send the next person in. After you've interviewed on one side, go have a seat on the other, and then go through and be interviewed on the other side. It's up to you to make sure that you're interviewed by both groups. After the interviews have concluded, we will reconvene our closed session, and then we will adjourn from that point. Decisions as to who will be appointed to the planning commission will be voted on by the city council in our December twenty-first meeting. Um, the names of the recommendations will be provided to our attorney tonight, and they will decide the appropriate, appropriate, I don't have enough time to have conversation, to find out if you guys will get noticed tomorrow, or if it will be, uh, at the time the agenda comes out for our next meeting. So my apologies for leaving you in limbo, but, uh, we'll leave those names with our, um, with our attorney. Are there any questions about how we'll proceed from here? I could, but I won't. So, uh, rather than making somebody try and repeat that, I will move that we, uh, convene, we move to convene in closed session, and I think we can just say, and adjourn from there. Do we need to?
This is, this is what I have for a little more clarity, and we can make sure with our attorney, uh, Mr. Ricky, that you move to go into a closed session to discuss the items that are listed, and then you recess the close, recess the closed session to interview the applicants for the planning commission positions, and then reconvene the closed session and adjourn from there.
And then I would ask, do we need to read those reasons for the closed session into the record?
You can read it, I might put them in anyway. No, we're, yes.
All right. So I would move that we proceed as outlined, with the reasons for the closed session being discussion of the character of professional competence for physical or mental health of an individual, strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, strategy sessions to discuss purchase, exchange of real, real estate, or, excuse me, release of real property, including any form of water rights or water shares. That would be the motion I would look for a second.
Second. Councilmember by Mayor Protem McConaughey, second by councilmember Nichols. Any discussions in the motion?
No.
Okay.
Go, Paul. Mayor Protem McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passed, the six in favor.